We're good to go?
All right.
Good evening, Williamsburg County citizens, Williamsburg County County Council, and those who are in our room today. We thank you again for joining us on our council meeting that's being held today, February 16th, 2021, 6:00 p.m. At this time, do we have anyone on Facebook that could advise us on the sound? Good? Very good. Also, at this time, do we have anyone on our teleconference line? Would anyone want to call in? Can call 1-877-309-2073. The access code is 590-380-589. Again, anyone on the telephone conference call line at this time, mark it immediately. Yes, all right. Good thing. All right, due to the barriers that we have in front of us, as well as the other safety measures that are in place at this time, council members, if you choose to do so, you may remove your face covers covering if you feel comfortable. This time, we're going to call this meeting to order. Invocation will be delivered by Mr. Woods. Councilman Woods.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for life. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you, heavenly Father, for giving us another opportunity to come before the citizens of Williamsburg County and do the business thereof. Heavenly Father, we know that you are the author and finisher of all things, and we know that you know the answer to all problems that we have. We want to ask right now, heavenly Father, that you come into this meeting this afternoon, come into it, and help us to make the right decisions that's going to benefit Williamsburg County and the citizens thereof. And heavenly Father, when all is said and done, we hope the things that we do and say be pleasing in your sight. And we ask these blessings and many others in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Woods. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled council meeting that was conducted February 1st, 2021. We need a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please raise your hand. All those that oppose, the same. The motion is carried. Next order of business is ordinance. We are in third reading for ordinance number 2021-02 and ordinance amending ordinance number 2015-007 to further define what is considered a connected customer in Section 2B and C thereof. We need a motion for approval of third reading. So moved, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of third reading of ordinance number 2021-02, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Next ordinance is third reading and final reading of ordinance number 2021-03, authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park between Georgetown County and Williamsburg County. Such industrial parks to be geographically located in each county and established pursuant to the South Carolina Code annotated Section 4-1-170 to provide for a written agreement between Georgetown County and Williamsburg County to provide for the expenses of a park, the percentage of the revenue application, and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valerian taxation and other related matters. What is the pleasure of council?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of third and final reading of ordinance number 2020-2021-03, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Our next order of business is the committee report, and I'm going to turn it over at this point to my vice chair, Councilman Woods, if you will.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The bid committee, we had a meeting on, it was held on Monday, February 8th, 2021, at 1:00 p.m. And the purpose of this meeting was to receive bids for contractors to serve the coroner's office. And what it entails really was to transport bodies from where they were to MUSC, perhaps for an autopsy or whatever, and beyond. And we received only one bid at that time. And that bid came from Florence Marchory and Remediation LLC, Florence, South Carolina. And they submitted a bid price of $195 per mile and $3 additional charge for autopsies if they had to go to MUSC in Charleston, also $3 per mile if they had to be transported to anywhere beyond that point. And it is a recommendation coming from this bid committee due to the fact that we only had one bid, and that bid was reasonable. We would like to recommend and offer that as a motion that the county council approve and accept this bid coming from Florence Marchory and Remediation of Florence, South Carolina. And that's the recommendation and motion coming from the bid committee.
We need a second.
Madam Supervisor, I just want to say, I don't think it was $195 per mile, was it?
Well, if they have to pick up, my understanding is if they had to pick up a body from Hemingway and transport it here to our Marchory, that would be $195. And if they had to take it on to MUSC for an autopsy and so forth, that would be $3 additional miles for that purpose.
But is it $195 per mile or $1.95?
No, the, the, said $195 per mile. I don't know if that was accurate or not. Do we have the, what did I say? Did it say? It says $195 per mile. The bid? Wait, actually, the bid.
I have a question.
Yeah, hold on one second. Let me see.
Yes.
I think that's incorrect. Because I remember it was going to be $227 for the trip. It was going to be like $227 per trip. So I kind of think that that's.
Okay, I'm not certain, but we will find out from the corner. But I think this may be a typo or something. It may be $195 per trip and $3 additional miles. But.
I think we need to know exactly what price we're dealing with.
Okay, well, is there some way we can?
I'm trying to reach out to her now.
Yes, she's trying to call her now.
If we can't reach her, the motion of council would be, at this point, to table this. I'll take it.
Let's just hold on one second. We'll be able to reach her in a minute.
It's not clear.
Plus two additional dollars a mile.
Okay, we are unable.
Is she there?
Hey. I know you're busy. Is it $195 per mile or is it $195 per trip?
Per trip. When they're going within the count.
And then $3 after that?
$3 if they go outside the count.
All right. You want to speak your phone? Go ahead.
Okay, correction. That's $195 per trip.
Per trip.
$3 additional miles.
They have to go outside of Williamsburg County, it's $3 per mile.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Second motion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. The motion is carried. Our business is the appointment to our boards and commissions. Members of council, last meeting, as well as, I believe, the meeting before that, we had asked you all that we needed to, for you all to review your current list of board members, that you appointed board members that you have for the various areas, and get back with us, and hopefully with an application that they have it filled out so that they can officially be added to the list of appointees for the various boards. Do we have any of them that came back at this point?
A question.
Madam Supervisor, I still need some more time.
Okay. Y'all need an extension?
I'd like to ask a question.
No problem. If you will, if we can.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
What is the purpose of the application?
The application is, will be placed, is needed because we need to have a little bit more information on file. So if there is ever a contested item that is brought before a board, then we at least have the information as to who's on the board, you know, emergency information, and anything that, you know, would be relevant to, you know, having information for a person. So that's why. Any other questions regarding purposes or reasons? All right, so we can postpone this at least until the next council meeting in March? Is that fine for everyone? We think we can get them back by then? Okay. So the first Monday's meeting in March, we can get those things back and place them in file, on file. All right, the next order of business, as far as new business, Ms. Yolanda McCray, who's the president and CEO of Black River, was unable to attend this meeting, and she will reschedule for March. Our next, next order of business before executive session is the supervisor's report. So, and this is our opportunity, and I want to start off by saying thank you to my finance team, my finance chief, as well, for putting this presentation together. Hopefully, it's up on the screen. I know it's on y'all's screen, but what about the big screen?
It's not on ours.
They're coming out right now. I knew that. We're so technology savvy that we can't even get our stuff. Savvy. Yeah, they can see it. Excuse us while we pause for a brief technical difficulty. No, they, they came over and pushed the button in. The public can't see it. All right, that's fine. All right. So, moving to, we felt that it was necessary that, you know, due to the fact that we are in the situation that we're in right now, dealing with uncertain times, that we would brief council in a mid-year review just to kind of show you where we are financially. Now, I'm going to brief through this slide. These slides will be available for you all if you would like to see them. Also, if you would like to see any of the backup documentation that's associated with this presentation, you're welcome to see that as well. So the status of our general fund and revenue. We're going to start off with our revenue first, and then we're going to move on to our expenditures. Right now, what you see on the screen is a list of our revenue sources that are received by the county. And this is up until the December 2020 date, which is marking, you know, half a year for us since we started the budget season out in July. So this is what we're looking at as far as what we expected to have and what we actually have as of the date, as far as December. So remember, we're working on July 1st to December 20th. So we have roughly a good, at least 43% of our revenue in as far as our taxes. In our license and permits area, we have about 12% collections that is currently in our budget right now, as well as our federal revenue. We're at about 22.93%. And notice our state revenue also, we have roughly about 33%. So in summary, with these particular batches of revenue, we are marking at about a total of about 41% of revenue that's in. Now, we have another, you know, the rest of these funding sources where we're showing a, where we're showing that we had not received all of the funding, and yet usually that'll come around towards the end of the budget year. So right now, we're doing really good in terms of our collection rate. So as you can tell, in certain cases, we are seeing a slight drop in our taxes. Tax collections, we're also seeing our revenue collections for the current real and vehicle tax and local option sales tax are up. Our delinquent taxes are down largely because of, obviously, people are trying to hold on to as much money as they have right now, and paying your property tax is not necessarily a priority considering you have an extension for a year to reclaim it once you receive your notices. This is the first year of collection on our boats and motor taxes, so we have not been able to see any, haven't been able to gauge any changes with that because this is the first time. We are expected to meet our anticipated estimate for our taxes by the end of this fiscal year. Other taxes, such as our local hospitality taxes, are slightly up. Majority of the revenue from other taxes are not expected again, as I stated earlier, until the end of the year. Our licenses and permits for mobile homes and decals are down again because of the unsurety of the housing market right now. We are facing that here also and receiving any, any additional revenue for bringing on mobile homes and things like that. Again, as far as our state and our federal funds, we included a FEMA reimbursement that came in, but that was due to another disaster. It was not dealing with COVID-related. And also, our state reimbursement from DSS also came in, and it dropped about 62% from 62 to 32%. Our state revenue, like I said, we talked about our accommodation taxes are slightly low, and other revenue sources will be, will also see a reduction for this fiscal year due to the fact that we no longer provide magistrate services to some municipalities. So that is going to show a budget issue with us in the upcoming budget season. Our charges for service, again, as I said, revenue collections are down for EMS, solid waste fees, and rental of county facilities largely because we do not have them open at this time. So those are things that we're going to have to consider when we are putting together our budget for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Again, in comparison to 2019, that comparison chart from December 2019 till now, we are seeing some slight decreases in our revenue, but again, as I stated, largely because of what we're going through right now is why we're experiencing some of the differences from last year, December 19th, to this year, December 19th. Status of our expenditures. Through the first half of the fiscal year, the county implemented, obviously, what you all know as our cost savings plan, or affectionately known as our consolidation plan, to help align some of our projected revenue with our, with our expenditures. The general fund expenditures due December 20th totaled $10,51,985.01, which is 46% of our total 2021 adjusted budget and below the mid-year percentages of 50%. So usually, what should happen in any, in any governmental situation involving our finances and budget is that we look to stay within 50% of our budget season, budget spending mid-year. So as you can tell, we're at 46.51%, so we're marking right on task what we're supposed to be at during the mid-year. So that's a good thing. The administration will come up, will continue to monitor the county's budget to ensure that the current year's revenues and expenditures are definitely meeting the estimated budget maintain, to maintain our fiscal, fiscal stability. In comparison to last year's fiscal year, the general funds are down. The spending for the general, under the general fund is down by about $171,144.01 or a 1.63 reduction for the month of December. So we are doing the best we can at watching our spending, although I know that there's much more we can be doing. We also implemented a process, not implemented, it was already there, but from now on, department heads, elected officials, when they are requesting resources, those resources must come through to me first for approval, and then it will go on to be purchased. So we are less likely to purchase things that we probably really don't need right now. So they have been doing a really good job in making sure that when they make a request, that they really need that request. And here's a breakdown of the general, the general fund and expenditures report. So again, if you look to the far side where it says percent of the budget spent, we are doing pretty good in terms of where we're supposed to be at mid-year. We have some, that we have some overages on, but we're, you know, we understand some, why some of those things are happening, and we're adjusting to ensure that we meet those needs. And here's the rest of it in terms of where everyone is with their spending. So all in all, I think they're doing pretty good with their spending. We have some of our agencies that we are, are special agencies that we have that we support them, and those agencies, you know, they range from like social service agencies, public defenders, senior citizens, those things, those agencies. And we've met with them today to discuss their budget issues and how we were moving forward with the county as far as getting a balanced budget for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. So that's pretty much it. And pretty, a quick brief, if you look at this slide, is talking about how much revenue we received and how many expenditures that we paid out. So we are, again, not spending over at this point, this, these, from the six months, we're not spending more than what we actually have in the bank. So that's working out for us really good. And after this, I will talk to you about the next initiative to ensure that that happens. So in summary, the county's resilience on the one-time, non-reoccurring revenue resources, we are trying to get away, and as of this next fiscal year that we're preparing for now, we are not relying on one-time funding. Now, we are working on some issues with the non-reoccurring revenue that comes in, but we will be dealing with that during the budget season. We're managing our budget based on, just remember, the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 numbers that we used to help develop the 2019, 2020 projections for the continued resolution. The second half of the current year may impose some certain challenges due to many unknowns that we're facing right now, dealing with the pandemic. And we are doing extensive analysis and cleaning up of our current fiscal year's budget will be required for the new fiscal 2021, 2022 operating budget. The capital project sales tax. Obviously, this has been a big concern of our citizens in, in terms of making sure that we are spending their capital, that one penny sales tax on all of the projects that were, were approved by council. And I wanted to give you a quick update on those projects. These are the projects that are currently in progress, which is the Williamsburg County New Fire EMS Headquarters and our St. Lawrence Facility. We are hopefully that, hoping that these two projects will be completed, anticipated completion by spring or early summer. The St. Lawrence Facility is, St. Lawrence Edition is about 98% complete, pending the completion of one of the shower areas. Both facilities will be presented at the public, will be presented to the public at the same time. So this is our current financial status that we have currently in the capital project sales tax money. Our revenue is a little over $2 million. Our expense is about 1.8. We do have about $441,000 as estimate that is encumbered, which means we are waiting until, to make this last payment on our fire department, waiting until we, we get an, we find out what our next dispersment is, because the dispersments are done quarterly. So we are waiting on that. Some of the other areas that we are, the next set that council has approved will be, some of the other areas where I think we finished the Hemingway Town Station and Town Hall. We also finished the King Street Public Safety Facility that was completed 7/20/20. We also purchased a new 911 CAD system that was completed, and we also completed the generator project. I misspoke. So next up on the line is, that are also in priority too, is the Town of Greeleyville's project, the Town of Stuckey Community Facility, as well as the Town of Lane Community Building, the multi-agency training facility equipment, Phase 1 for the sheriff's office. And we also have a remaining approval that must be approved for the Stuckey Water Facility. So these priorities add up to about $611,000. So all of these must be completed before we can start on Priority 3 projects. So that's our financial positioning mid-year, December 2020. Any questions?
Madam Supervisor, what is the timeline, do you believe, for the Phase 2 projects to begin?
You mean Priority 3?
Priority 3, yes. I know. Priority.
We did Priority 1. Priority 2, you mean these projects, the last couple, like Greeleyville. In March, we receive another dispersment, and once that dispersment is provided to us, then we will go ahead and hopefully they're doing their, their background work now. So once it actually, we get the money in, they can actually start paying for the services that they're, they've already began, or should have already began.
Madam Supervisor, I think, is this, this, 2022, is that the time that if we are going to continuously with this penny sales tax, we have, we have to go back and present it to the citizen?
Yeah.
And the amount of work that we're doing now depends on the amount of money comes in, right?
So we will have to start thinking about, real soon, what projects that are, that we're thinking about. Again, this is going to be based on really bringing the board back in, getting them involved in it, and then talking about projects that we want to see from the county, and then taking that out to the citizens. So we will start that process up, hopefully, this time earlier than we did the last time because we were rushing through. So I would like to get that started early, 2022. Any other questions?
Madam Supervisor. These, Priority, this Priority 3. What is the total cost of the projects in Priority 3?
That's a good question. I'll have to get back with you on that. Because I don't know off the top of my head, because some of those things were placed on something that was called pay-as-you-go, meaning as, as the tax money began to come in, we didn't want to take out any additional money on, any additional bonds on money that was so far out. So what'll end up happening in that case is that as we receive money in, then those projects will be executed. We'll take care of them.
Just one more question. Were any of those projects in, in Priority 3 not get funded?
It's possible, depending upon how the funding comes in. You know, we, we set out, set our goals real high, and I think we did some really good estimates on what we felt, or what we thought our capital project, our money would be. But obviously, COVID and a number of other things impacted that. So we are looking at the possibility of, there could be a chance that we won't finish them. But I'm hopeful. I mean, and of course, those projects can be carried over if we go ahead as, as a body and decide to carry that, or to, to try for another penny sales tax. Any other questions? Hearing none. So one last thing I wanted to talk about to you, with you also, is that, as you all know, we are preparing for the 2021, 2022 budget season. Now, this budget season is going to be challenging, obviously, again, because we are dealing with uncertainties. And so I just want to say that as, we're going to add on something a little bit different for our department heads, and I hadn't had the opportunity to really push this to them, but mostly what we have been doing in county government, which is why I see now that we run sometimes over in budgets, and that is because we oftentimes spend what's on paper. As you all know, what's on paper is not going to necessarily give you a true measure of what you can actually pay for. It just simply says that this is available. So we are going to be transitioning into something a little bit different this time, and it's going to be pretty much as, as spend as we go, meaning if we do not have the money physically in the bank account, physically, then we will not be spending it. So what will happen is every month or every quarter, departments will be issued a, a new statement as to where. new statement as to where they, what they can spend, how much money they can spend. This will cut down on us not being able to pay bills on time, because everyone knows in the beginning, it's kinda rough for us. We're just surviving on the tan. And this time, this will give us an opportunity to kinda spread that cost out along the way. Very, um, very similar to a person that makes $80,000 a year is not gonna spend $65,000 a year the first two months of the year, right? They gotta wait until that money comes in. And I found that we were doing that in county government, which ends up costing us a lot more on the back end of it. So we're implementing that, and hopefully, we can control spending a little bit more so that we can make sure, yes, that we get the things that they need, but that we spread them out across us actually having the money to pay for them.
Yeah, Madam Supervisor, would, would each department head be getting that allocation monthly or quarterly?
It depends on how we wanna break it up. I think my, uh, my, uh, finance chief wants to do it monthly. Um, I thought about it, doing it quarterly, depending upon how the income is coming in. It's kinda, it's gonna be very tedious for her to do this monthly, cause you're gonna have to make sure that you're posting what you spent last month in time to get out what they got for this month. So I don't know, we'll try it and see.
Well, if I have, if I could give a recommendation, I would recommend monthly, simply because, um, when I was at the prison, that's what we did. We accounted for our expenses and for money that came in, uh, monthly, that we were not surprised at three months or at the end of the fiscal year. So it may be a little tedious until you get the hang of it, but as long as we can manage that budget and not fall into the pitfall we did a few years ago, it's worth it.
Right. So I agree. Um, so we'll, we'll look at, we'll gauge both of it and run the, run the numbers on both of them, but I like both ideas, um, so I'm open to either of the ideas. Preferably, I would like it monthly, but I just know, if we can do it, great, um, with, with our level of manpower up there, we can do it wonderful. Um, it, it'll work out for us. Um, so that's what's happening. And another update on, and we're still getting a few preliminary numbers in, as you all know, we did the reconstruction plan, uh, and we started that process, and it has been very successful for Williamsburg County. And I must say that I, I gotta thank, you know, my department and elected officials for, and appointed officials for actually getting on board and supporting this mission. Um, we have realized that we have, um, we have created a cost savings of a little over a million dollars in our budget, which is great for us, because we really need it. So again, that creates a situation to where we're no longer, at this point, and I'm only gonna say it, we are not relying on one-time revenues to get us through this next budget season. So I'd like to give my team and department heads of Williamsburg County Government a round of applause for, that is very good for us to save a million dollars. I'm excited. Um, some didn't think we were gonna be able to do it, but we did it. So I'm happy about that. Um, the next order of business is that we need to move, go into executive session according to section 30 dash four dash seven zero A, discussion of a personnel matter concerning salaries.
So move.
Probably move to second, any discussion?
Sure.
Hearing none? All those in favor of, and moving to executive session, please signify by raising your hand. Opposers, the same. We move to executive session. And can y'all let me know when y'all decide to take the computer over? I thought I was doing something wrong. Oh, my goodness.
All right, we're back. We need a motion.
Motion to come on the executive session.
Yes. We need a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of returning back to the regularly scheduled council meeting, please signify by saying or raising your hand. Opposers have the same. All right. As far as the executive session issue, when discussing a personnel matter, there was no action taken at this time. We need a motion for adjournment.